Well, good evening ladies and gentlemen, and welcome.
Yeah, I'm afraid.
Other nice schmoozy stuff. It is 7:00 PM on the 20th of August in the year 2018. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the State and City Council. I'm gonna call it to order, and let's join me in a flag salute, please. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. That's a lot to live up to. Okay. Staff is present, the council is present. Our deputy recorder, city manager, and then you and I, so we're all here. Announcements, additions to the agenda, are there any? Declarations of ex-party contact, conflicts of interest, bias?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I've already testified in regards to the hearing tonight and annexation, so my sentiments were known at the planning commission. I'm gonna recuse myself from that discussion and that vote tonight.
Okay, alright, duly noted. Let's see, consent agenda is two items this evening, the August 6th, 2018 council minutes, and an Oregon Liquor Control Commission, new outlet liquor control license application, the Snow Peak Brewery Public House. What is the council's wish on those items?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept those as written.
Okay, I've got a motion.
I second it.
A motion and a second to accept the count, the consent agenda as presented. Everyone's seen that, had a chance to look at it. If so, let's go to a vote, all in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Post same sign. Hearing none will declare that motion passed and the consent agenda approved. And we go right now to a... No, 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 wait. Wait a minute, let's do presentations and comments from the public. I saw a line scratched out and thought maybe I could get away without having to listen to all that, but that's not good, so let's do that. Reese, would you like to start? This is Reese Bordue, who lives in Millstream Woods.
I do. I just wanna make sure that on the agenda tonight is some other things that have to do with City of State and Ordinance that was passed, number 1019, because if there is, you probably want us all together.
Well...
It's not the agenda.
Not really, it's not an agenda item, so, but they're, you know, we're expecting comments, I am anyway, so go ahead.
But I'm the only one that gave you a slip for comments.
Well, there are always surprises.
Okay. I'll start out by giving thanks to the city councilors. You're the volunteers. Primarily presenting this for what? Sorry they didn't get in earlier, but we wanted to give them a week before we collected them. Thank you, welcome. So, I won't take your whole 10 minutes, but I will take your three, and I wrote something down this time. Well, the last time I was here, it was after four years of working with the dog park, which we have in, and we're very grateful for, and we still need a few things done, but I know it'll happen eventually. And I'm going to read a little statement. What you have and what I handed the city councilors and the city was about 10 pages, which are signatures from shoppers and community people in support of City of State and Ordinance, number 1019, section 2, paragraph 5, which is an ordinance that was passed to basically ban smoking of anything along Third Avenue to First Avenue in the shopper community downtown area that many people, mostly frankly, volunteers, friends of Old Town State and the chamber, revitalized downtown State and have worked tirelessly to turn the lights on in that area. We just had a presentation that came, a group Main Street Refresh State and business owners, property owners, and building owners attended that. There were 95 questionnaires turned in, and in the business owner, business owner, not building owner, meeting of businesses that have been working and contributing for the last two to seven years to keep their doors open along Third Avenue, of about the 15 present, I am not going to say their names, but I'm going to tell you that only three are still or making any profit. The rest are contributing their time, their personal money, their efforts and energies to stay in business, hoping that others come on board. And I probably can tell you, because it's public record, was Monty's covered bridge and Priscilla's property that said that they were, I don't know if they want to confirm that or not, that said budget blinds, that is in the green, it's called when you're an entrepreneur, small business, of those who attended. So, that in itself is eye-opening. Based on that, and based on the fact that for the last four and a half months, I was a business owner in town, relocated three times, and then went to Oregon Garden to get a paycheck for a while before I semi-retired. I also wrote for our town. Any great teacher will tell you that they don't teach, they inspire. The most successful people learned by being around mentors or others. It doesn't happen in a TV sitcom, or a two-hour movie, or even rarely, or yet, on these phones that all of us have that have kind of taken over our lives, our commerce, our children's lives, and now many of our minds. It's not a surprise to almost anyone that a lot of things can be ordered online, too, so businesses suffer from that. In working for the last four months at one of the small businesses between, on Third Avenue, to kind of mentor and volunteer and help her get some retail stuff in order, three-quarters of the day, we've had to keep our door shut because there is initially just kind of smoke wafting over, and then whether young people, or business people, or out-of-work-from-the-day people are partying, or gambling a little, or meeting up, when they're outside smoking, it's not just a smell, the language gets riper, the volume gets riper, and the attitude gets kind of New Orleans-ish. We now have a dance studio on one side, a mortuary that does services on the other, a family bakery, a new hair salon, and a natural food store. All of those businesses, those businesses paying out of pocket that I just mentioned, end up having to keep their doors shut from the afternoon at least on until they close up for the day. Because of this...
Can I, Reese?
And it's changed, it's changed now for the good
Okay.
because of an ordinance, but that we understand has been challenged. So what the city council got was eight pages of signatures and support documents from shoppers that had it for, the merchants had the forms for a week, to have people sign on in support of maintaining this ban, so we don't lose any more family-owned entrepreneurial businesses that are trying to survive for our whole community, and in fact, we grow more. The businesses impacted have not only a front door access, but they have back door. So, that's what we wanted to say, and thank you for receiving those documents, thank you for voting for the ordinance, please maintain it.
Okay. Reese, I forgot to mention that we try to limit, I'm not always good about it, but try to limit those free expressions to about three minutes. Otherwise, it becomes this wide-open...
Cool, it said three minutes for speaking, 10 minutes for presentation. That's what it said back there.
Oh, you're supposed to, you're supposed to check one off, though. It isn't either...
I think I did.
You probably did, thank you, though.
Thank you.
Okay, who's next? Let's go, we'll take a break from that topic for a minute, I think, if you guys and gals are okay with it. Howard Robertson, San Am Golf Club. We'll come back to the Third Street excitement in a little bit. Howard?
Good evening, and thank you for the time. This last past week or so, we had some survey stakes placed on the golf course along Mill Creek, and I've reached out to state, county, I've reached out to the city planning here, and nobody seems to know exactly what they were, and the city here tried, tried to get in touch, somebody to get in touch with me, but I haven't heard back yet, and my board members and many of the members of the club are getting a little concerned that those survey stakes might be related to the properties up on Shaft and where the potential stormwater might be putting into Mill River, I mean Mill Creek, I guess would be east of us, and then creating potential hazards down at the golf course, we have problems with flooding.
I can answer that for you. I was never contacted to find out where those survey stakes came from. What I can do, I think it's a guess, but I think it's a pretty good guess, is the city of Turner, I believe, is having a study down at Mill Creek, because they have all the flooding issues down there, and they hired an engineer to survey Mill Creek Basin, so they're probably putting cross-sections along Mill Creek to see what floods, when the rainfall comes down in the wintertime, what floods do to the property there. So I'm guessing that's it. If you want to reach out to me tomorrow, I can give you the person's name that is actually performing that survey.
Okay.
And I'm pretty sure that's who it is, but my name is Lance again, you can contact me at 503-769-2919, and I'll be happy to give the gentleman's name to you.
Okay, and that is related to that property above, just so I can go back to my board members?
Excuse me? It goes all the way up Mill Creek, out through state and all the way up to the basin, so there's, there's surveying being done all up Mill Creek.
The question that they have is, is it related to the new housing project, or is this just a general?
No, no, this is just a basin-wide study for the city to try to come up with some mediation for all the flooding they have.
Okay. Okay, they just, of course, the assumption was it was tied into the new projects, but this is just something that they would have done anyways?
Well, not that I'm aware of, a little later on, the gentleman that's actually designing that subdivision will be speaking on behalf of a different little development, and he can tell you, but I'm pretty sure it's not, it's not, so.
Okay, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, back to another topic, Samantha Jones, please. Sam, tell us, tell us who you are and where you live, please.
My name is Samantha Jones, and I stay in State and at 1509 Locust Street. I work at Mick and Moms Bar and Grill on Third Street.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. I have a personal letter here from Yi, he, his English isn't altogether audible and doesn't feel comfortable, so he asked me if I would read a letter from him, then I also have one. "I live in the United States and believe in the American dream. I work very hard to support my family, paying taxes and as any other citizen. I appreciate the opportunity the city of State and has given me to run my bar business here, allowing the opportunities to support the community by paying business taxes, offer jobs to our citizens. We all believe the city of State and has always strived to achieve justice for all of its citizens. Mick and Moms has been in business for more than 70 years. Please don't take away the opportunity for us to provide a comfortable environment to entertain our customers. We've been doing what we are legally obligated to do as a business in the city of State and. Ever since we heard of this new smoking ordinance, which with no prior knowledge or notice from the city, our business personnel and bar customers have been very upset over this new rule, therefore causing negative impact on our business. There are malls within the city of State and, and they may be busier than the businesses in the downtown area. There are lots of customers there, and I'm sure there are lots of smokers as well. What are the standards in terms of deciding which area to apply that new rule? Please help me to understand why the new ordinance has only targeted a few streets in downtown, as everyone has mentioned the negative impact from our last meeting on 86. I am sure this new rule will kill the business here. In order to achieve a win-win situation, we ask that the city please rescind this new ordinance in order to allow business, our business, to continue supporting the local community, at the same time allow smokers to have their freedom back." Okay, that was a personal letter from Yi. Now I'd like to address the council. Tonight I would like to start by talking about a story I recently saw in the State and Mail, Almsville Political Newbies Lead Recall. It's a newspaper article about a community so angered by a city council enacting ordinance behind their backs that they created a movement to recall three of those city council members. The idea that a city government, though, "we know better and we don't need you," had people from both sides of the political spectrum working together with one goal in mind, to remove those tyrants. I find the article to be of great interest, with such valuable lessons to be learned. On May 21st, 2018, this council voted and approved the smoking ban on downtown public property. There was no community involvement that I'm aware of, save for the revitalization of downtown State and Group, which both city councillor, Priscilla Glidewell, is a member. Since July 16th meeting, this council has heard from many individuals and businesses denouncing this enactment. On July 16th, I asked how we could go about getting a revote on that issue. Mr. Campbell said, "I can look into the procedures and put it to a vote," with the mayor saying, "Let's do that." That was over a month ago, and I've heard nothing in regards to it. What I have heard is the mayor coming to my place of work and telling me that if we had policed cigarette butts better, we may not have this problem. He's informed me that coming here and appealing the city council, he doesn't think will do me any good. By protesting my objection to something my government has done is my right, is our right, because I'm not alone in this. America is an amazing country founded on the principles of limiting government and the importance of self-ownership. A country where backhanded politics, corrupt city officials, and harassment of community members has no place. You are put in a place by the people, for the people, and you can certainly be removed by them and for them, as evidenced in one town over. I have been patient in waiting, but now I demand a response. Will you give me what I need to put this matter up for reconsideration, or shall I seek the advice from the Almsville Community Action Group? You know, I've, I've not seen any documentation of any of these surveys, none of them, and the businesses owners here, we have not heard of the survey, and we're the businesses that are gonna be the most impacted. If you talk about Third Street, there's Trask's, they both smoke, Mr. Manager, you were there today and spoke with the husband and wife, they smoke in front of their own business. Next you have Mick and Moms, next you have the barber shop, next you have the marijuana store, then you have the ballet school, which is a new business, then you have the Wave Broadband, all of those businesses, I can't speak for, Roxy, she's not a smoker, but she's, she's not for the ordinance, Wave Broadband, the people at the marijuana store, they're all smokers, we don't all have access or the ability to go outside and smoke out the back door, nor should we be forced to. Today, I witnessed at the funeral home grieving family members smoking on a bench that was provided for them, right there on Third Street. So, while, while all things may sound good and well, show us the documentation, show us the proof, and then do something about it, because everybody has a vote and everybody has a say.
Okay, alright, thank you, Sam. The best I heard about putting anything on a referendum or an initiative would have to be next May. We couldn't get it on the November ballot. It's too late.
Was, was my asking you too late at the time that I asked you?
Yeah.
Or was it just postponed until it was too late?
No, no.
Because you were asking, you've been asked for a month and a half now. This is the third city council meeting, and now it's too late to make the November ballot? Is that what I'm to understand?
No, it was too late then. I don't want the cutoff was probably April, or May at least, to get on, to get on that November ballot.
Well, that's convenient.
I'm just trying to give you an answer, so we don't have to argue over coffee in the morning.
I, I don't want to argue over it, I want something done. We have asked, you have heard from so many people, and every council meeting, we fill this room up. And you yourself told me you didn't think anything was gonna come of it. That's, that's a personal agenda, that's, that's not being a person who serves the public, because the public has a voice.
Well, I probably, I probably can say what I think about, about something, Sam, and it isn't, it isn't official, I, I don't think they'll carry.
Well, the fact that you're our mayor and you're on our city council, it is important, and it does matter.
What's that? Time is up, okay, thank you, Sam.
You're welcome.
James McGrawry. James? Could be a, could be a long evening.
Good evening, thank you allowing me to speak again. I'm talking about City Ordinance number 1019, maintenance of buildings and public spaces, specifically section 2.5, smoking prohibited. I don't feel that the minutes of the meeting, and I have a copy right here. I currently reflect what was stated or presented. Ms. Jones submitted many signatures from people over this ordinance. What happened to that? There is no evidence of any action. Also recommended by Steve Poison for a delay of this ordinance until there's a meeting to discuss all ordinances that affect downtown State, with all those involved. There's no action by the council. Why? It is felt that our concerns are being completely ignored. When does the council discuss issues and motions put forth by the public for you to vote on? We want a decision, we put forth a motion to rescind this ordinance. We ain't getting no information back that it was even discussed. Do you hear me? Just like a completely ignored, like, we're just so much better than you, but we are the city of State. We are the city of State. The point of affirmation, I believe I'm speaking correctly, city doesn't own the sidewalks in front of the businesses. They own the street, they don't own the sidewalks, do they?
No, that's not correct, the, the city does own the sidewalks, you're responsible for the sidewalks as a business owner.
Responsible for.
Yeah, as far as the maintenance.
That's part of the property.
Yeah, but the city does own the right of way, which includes the sidewalks.
Please repeal this crazy ordinance, please. Bring this motion from the people to a vote, and disclose how each of you voted, and we need to know by the 28th of August. People might want to register to take your place.
Thank you, James. David, David Rhodes? David? Oh, he's back there, okay. How are we gonna do this? David, you had some safety concerns, I understand. Go ahead, please.
Good evening, everybody. My name's David Rhodes, R O A D S. My concern is a crosswalk in paint and a couple pedestrian signs on the east and west side of the, of Fern Ridge, because there's a lot of people crossing over that Third Street, and there's no crosswalk there for us to feel safe, so I feel like a deer crossing the highway sometimes. I would like to see it not put a street light up there or light, because that would be too, too out of the question. I'd like to see it. Speaking for the people who cross over, they're high school kids, grade school kids, I'd like to see a crosswalk in paint, or something in there to, to make us feel more safer. And that's all I have to say, thank you for your time, and appreciate it, thank you, people, have a good night.
Okay, thank you, thank you, David.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Can I just clarify, where, is he talking about Third and Shaft Road?
Third, Fern Ridge.
Fern Ridge, oh, okay, okay.
Crossing over Third from, crossing over Fern Ridge from Third Street.
Okay, great, I just wanted to get clarification, thank you.
Okay. Duly noted, um, let's see. Jordan Ort, I don't know if I'm seeing that right, that's the annexation, that subdivision. Jordan, you want to wait till we get into the public hearing?
Yes.
You do, okay, and, and Mr. Weaver, the same, right? Okay. Anyone else on anything, except those, those major public hearings, anything else? We're not even past, we're half an hour into this and not even past public comments, so let's go on into, we're done with that. Let's go to our first public hearing tonight. And I need to read something to start with here. Oh, okay, ordinance 1024. "Good evening, I'm Henry Porter, as mayor, I'll be presiding over this hearing. This is the time and place set for a public hearing in the matter of land use file, number 14-06/18, concerning legislative amendments to the Land Use and Development Code regarding temporary signs in the public semi-public zone. The hearing is now open. The back counter is the agenda for this evening's meeting, which lays out the order in which people will be called on to speak during the public hearing, copies of the proposed map amendments, the city's rules and procedure for land use public hearings, and a brochure written to facilitate your participation in the public hearing. You're encouraged to obtain and read a copy..." You're encouraged to obtain and read a copy of these documents as well. At this time, I would ask the audience if there are any objections to the notice for this hearing, and I don't hear any, to the jurisdiction of this body to hear and consider the case. I don't hear any there. Are there any declarations of conflict of interest, ex parte contact, or bias by any members of this body? And I don't hear any there. When is your turn to speak? Please state your name and address for the record as a participant in the hearing. The city is required to notify you of the final, final results of the process. We're now ready for the staff report. Mr. Fleishman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and members of the public. The issue before the city council this evening is the public hearing on legislative amendments to the Land Use and Development Code that would allow more flexibility in the placement of temporary signs for properties that are in the public slash semi-public zone. Following the public hearing, the council will be presented with Ordinance 1024 for your consideration, that if adopted, would amend the code. At their April meeting, the planning commission had a discussion with a representative from the State and Methodist Church on Fern Ridge Road regarding sign regulations. At that time, the church requested that the planning commission consider an amendment to the code that would allow temporary or portable signs to be placed within the public right-of-way. Currently, the Land Use and Development Code sign regulations prohibit temporary and portable signs from being placed in the public right-of-way with the exception of certain portable signs in the downtown area. The width of the Fern Ridge Road right-of-way means that if signs are placed outside of the right-of-way, they're not visible, and the planning commission reviewed a possible amendment at their May meeting, scheduled a hearing at their July meeting, and forwarded the amendment that you have in front of you to you at that time. The amendment, as proposed by the planning commission, would allow a temporary sign in the public semi-public zone to be located within the street right-of-way if the right-of-way is wider than 60 feet, and if there is a landscape strip between the curb and sidewalk that exceeds five feet in width. The amendment was, shall we say, very narrowly tailored to, so that it would not open up very many areas to signs being placed, placed in the public right-of-way. Using the city's geographic information system, this afternoon, I looked at all of the street rights-of-way that are bordered by a public zone, then selected those that are wider than 60 feet, and then looked at those that had a planting strip between the curb and sidewalk of at least five feet, and there are only two areas in the city that meet those criteria. They are in front of the Methodist Church on Fern Ridge and in front of State and Middle School on Shaft Road. Those are the only two areas that meet all of the criteria that would be opened up by this amendment. So, the planning commission has recommended adoption of the amendments, and staff recommends adoption of Ordinance 1024 as presented.
Okay. Thank you, Dan. Questions from the council? Anything? Go ahead. Ms. Gladwell?
So, I, I would assume that the Methodist Church came because they wanted to put up some kind of a sign in the public right-of-way?
They, they, they have, I guess, received contact from the city's enforcement staff when they have had temporary signs up for special events, and as a result of that...
Oh, okay.
They placed them in, they, I assume they placed them in the right-of-way between the sidewalk and the curb.
Telling people, like, an event at the church.
Telling the people that there's a spaghetti dinner or, or whatever.
Got it. So, now, again, I guess that's the, that's the key where I kind of missed it. It's a temporary sign. They're not wanting to put a permanent sign of some kind of...
The amendments that are before you amend the section in the code that addresses temporary signs.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from the council? Anything? Uh, proponents' testimony? Tell us your name and address, please, ma'am.
My name is Irene Marchbanks. I don't think you need my address, because I live in Sublimity.
We do need your address, because we're obligated to notify you of the final decision of the city council.
Oh, well, that, in that case?
That's why, that's why I asked, yeah.
P.O. Box 207, Sublimity 97385.
385.
And I'm representing the State and United Methodist Church. So, it started with a sign out in front of our church announcing the choir Christmas program, and we were visited or called, the, this office was that the sign had to be removed or we'd get a $250 fine, that the city had received a complaint. So, since that time, which was mid-December, we haven't put any temporary signs out, nothing about Christmas Eve service, nothing about Easter service. So, there is, there are a few times during the year we like to advertise what, what's going on in the church with something closer to the street. So, we decide, I decided, myself and my friend Myrna decided that we needed to do this legally, because we're a church. We couldn't try to get away with it, and we're cheap. We don't want to pay $250 every time we break the law. So, that's, that's the deal. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Anyone else on proponents? Are there any opponents? Anyone opposed to this? Any government agencies other than us involved in this? Guess not. Who else would be involved? A county? Because of right-of-ways and roads? Dan?
Both of, both Shaft Road and Fern Ridge Road are Marion County-maintained streets, so they might have an interest in this, but they, they are not here tonight.
We can't, did we contact them or need, feel the need to?
I made contact with their engineering staff.
Okay. Any general testimony? Questions from the public? Questions from the council? Go ahead.
Dan, so, if this was to pass, the only people that would be able to put garage sale signs out in the future would be neighborhood directly across the street on Fern Ridge and the neighborhood adjacent to the school, middle school.
The, the impact of the proposed amendment only addresses temporary signs that are in a public zone.
Okay, yeah.
It does not impact commercial property or residential property, and it would not affect, um, your or your neighbor's ability to put out a yard sale sign removed from your house. That still would not be permitted. I guess unless you got permission from the church to put one on their property or one up to the middle school...
There you go.
To put one up there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, good. Any other questions from the council? Anything? Um, Dan, a staff summary? Do you have something?
I, I don't have any more to add. The options that staff has provided to you are to approve the ordinance as presented or make modifications to it, or retain the code unchanged, and you've got suggested motions in, at the tail end of the staff report for each of those options.
Okay. All right, thank you. Let's go ahead and close the hearing under council deliberation. What do you folks want to do with this?
A move, we accept the council's recommendation, or the staff recommendation number one.
So...
Amendment as...
Option one, councilman?
Yeah.
Approve the first consideration of Ordinance 1024. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion to end a second. Alyssa, would you, under discussion, is there any discussion on this? Okay. Alyssa, would you poll the council, please?
Sure. Councilor Gladwell?
Yes.
Councilor Uselman?
Yes.
Councilor Quigley?
Yes.
Councilor Mullen?
Yes.
Councilor Cronquist?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay, good. Uh, we've got a, yes, uh, let's see, there's a closing statement.
Look on the, look on the back.
Yeah, the council's decision may be appealed to the Land Use Board of Appeals within 21 days in accordance with Oregon Revised Statutes 197.830. Okay, done with that. The next one is...
Excuse myself.
An annexation application on East Virginia Street. Same thing. I've got to read some more stuff, so bear with me here. Good evening, again. I'm Hank Porter. I'm the mayor of Stateon, and I'll be presiding over this hearing. This is the time and place set for the city council's public hearing in the matter of land use file number 13-06/18, an application for annexation of approximately one-quarter acre of land on East Virginia Street into the city limits. The applicant, application requests that the property be zoned medium-density residential. Hearing is now open. Oregon land use law requires a statement be made to those in attendance that covers certain matters relative, relative to this case. That statement, with all the information required to be presented under O.R.S. 197.763 Bracket Five, is printed and available on the table at the back of the room. If you've not yet received one of these forms, you should go get one and review it prior to presenting your testimony. If anyone has any questions regarding anything on the statement or objects to it not being read out loud, please raise those questions when it comes your turn to speak during the hearing. Also, at the back counter is the agenda for this evening's meeting, which lays out the order in which people will be called on to speak during the public hearing, the city council's rules of procedure for land use public hearings, and a brochure written to facilitate your participation in the public hearing. You're encouraged to obtain and read a copy of those documents as well. At this time, I would ask the audience if there are any objections to the notice that was provided in this case. Okay, none? To the jurisdiction of this body to hear and consider the case? No? I hear none, if there aren't any, and there, are there any declarations of conflict of interest, ex parte contact, or bias by any members of the council? And I think Brian already declared that he was going to stay out of this because he's an adjacent, an adjacent property owner. We're now ready for the staff introduction. So, Mr. Fleishman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the public. The issue before you is a public hearing on an application for the annexation of approximately a quarter acre of land into the city. This is an, what's known as an island of unannexed land. It is completely surrounded by the city limits. It is adjacent to the original city boundary of the city of Stateon from when the city was incorporated, and the land around it has been annexed, um, in the mid to late 20th century, but in doing so, the city failed to include this little, about 11,000 square foot rectangle of, of land. As noted in the opening statement, the mayor read, the applicant has requested that medium-density zoning be applied to the property when it is annexed. The quarter acre that is being annexed is a portion, about a quarter, of a tax parcel, and the portion of the tax parcel that is currently in the city limits is zoned as medium-density residential, and has been, from what I can tell, from the time the zoning ordinance was passed in the late 1970s sometime. I will leave it at that for now. Turn it over to the applicant for their presentation, and then I'll be back with my staff report and recommendation.
Good evening. Tell us who you are, and where you live, and if you want, who you work for.
Good evening. My name's Kurt Fisher. I'm a planner for AKS Engineering and Forestry. We're a planning consultant for the applicant for this, this project, for this annexation application. My address is 4300 Cherry Avenue Northeast in Kaiser. This'll be pretty brief. I don't have a whole lot to add. In addition to what Dan just provided, I'll give you a little bit of overview of our site. This is the lot that we're talking about right here. It's just over an acre. As Dan said, the portion is on the east side right here, that it lies outside of the city limits. The surrounding area, the lot is primarily zoned, uh, medium-density, though it abuts medium-density to the west, to the south, low-density to the east, and higher-density to the north, and includes this segment, this unconnected segment of, um, East Virginia Street right down here. Here's a snapshot of the tax lot map that shows, um, a little bit more detail on the portion that we're talking about. It's this portion right here. So, just over a quarter of an acre. We have, feel that we've addressed all the approval criteria to justify the annexation. The annexation does meet a documented need, and that's documented in our application and the packet, based on your buildable lands inventory and your housing needs assessment, current development patterns, and current growth rates. There is a small deficit of residential land available to meet, um, the needs for projected housing needs, uh, for the city of Stateon's projected growth. As Dan said, it's contiguous with the city limits on all sides. It's an island of unannexed land. We are proposing medium-density zoning, uh, because the rest of the lot, as you can see right here, is already in the medium-density zone, and my understanding is it has been ever since it's been included into the city. City policies, city comprehensive planning policies, uh, state that whenever possible, zoning districts should follow existing property lines, uh, and avoid split zoning whenever possible. So, it makes sense to select the medium, apply the medium-density zone to the entire lot, um, to comply with city policy and make it consistent with the rest of the lot. On the compatibility criteria, um, again, the medium-density zone is the most widely-applied zone in the, in the adjacent area. It's what's been, been applied to the rest of the lot. It would allow, uh, lot sizes that are very similar to the lot sizes that are already existing, um, in neighboring properties, and it would allow, uh, density of development that's right in the middle of, uh, what is already developed on the surrounding properties. And with that, I will step down, and I will take your questions, uh, at the appropriate time in the hearing, um, after you've taken some public testimony.
All right, thank you. Mr. Fisher? And you will be available for questions and...
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Uh, let's see. Dan?
Hi.
You're on again.
Right, thank you.
Your staff report.
So, um, the matter that before you, is before you is the annexation of territory. The applicant submitted a concurrent application for subdivision approval. That application was acted on by the planning commission and is not before you tonight. The only question before you tonight is, should this property be annexed, or should it not be annexed? And associated with that, what zone to designate the newly-annexed territory? There are six criteria for approval in the code that, um, for annexation applications. One of the... One of those criteria apply only to contract annexations and therefore is not applicable to this application. Uh, the other five criteria are: A, the need exists in the community for the land proposed to be annexed; B, the site is or is capable of being serviced by adequate public... City public services; C, the proposed annexation is property contiguous to the existing city limits; D, the proposed annexation is compatible with the character of the surrounding area and complies with the urban growth program and policies of the city; and E, the annexation request complies or can be made to comply with all applicable provisions of state and local law. Criteria B, C, and E are fairly objective and leave little for interpretation. Either the property is contiguous or it's not contiguous. Either city services are available or there are not. Uh, and in this case, it is surrounded by the city limits and their sewer and water facilities are available to the property. So, there are two other criteria for really your scrutiny and analysis. The need for any annexation can always be debated. The code provides no guidance to you as to what constitutes need. It provides no guidance to the applicant as to what information they need to present and it provides no guidance to staff as to how to... What information to present to you to help you make that decision. In looking at the city's comprehensive plan, the set of adopted information by the council and the policies in that... That have been adopted by the council, uh, we find the buildable lands inventory that was conducted in 2013. I've provided to you in the written staff report a, um, a complete description of what's, um, in the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan notes that in order to meet the projected needs of the community according to the population projections, that an additional three-hundred-and-twenty acres of residential land will be needed to be annexed into the city. Since the time the plan has been adopted, the city has annexed forty acres of residential land. Also in the... In the written staff report is an analysis of... The staff has conducted of the existing, uh, inventory of vacant residential land within the city limits. There are currently ninety-one vacant lots totaling a hundred acres that are residentially zoned. However, staff's analysis is of those ninety-one parcels totaling a hundred acres, only fifty-seven parcels totaling fifty-eight acres of land are reasonably available for development. Lack of utility availability, ownership by a governmental entity even though they're zoned residential, wetlands and floodplain issues, uh, and, um, shall we say, legal issues with the developer of a recent subdivision that has resulted in the city withholding building permits, get reduced the ninety-one parcels down to fifty-seven, totaling only fifty-eight acres of land. The city's growth from 2000 to 2017 was about one percent per year with a population change of nine-hundred-and-fifty-four people. The... The coordinate... Marion County coordinated growth projection for... For which our comprehensive plan was based for the year 2030 is for a population of eleven-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixty, which was represented a one-point-six-percent growth rate. If we take our most recent population... Certified population estimate and apply that one-point-six-percent growth rate, there would be the need for an additional five-hundred-and-forty-one dwelling units over the next ten years. If we assume an average of five units per acre for single-family development, there would be the need for all of the existing vacant land in the city and an additional sixty-five acres of land beyond that to accommodate the number of homes to... For the growth projected in the next ten years. So, that's one basis for determining whether there is need for additional land in the city or not. The other criterion that requires some analysis and some judgment on behalf of the council is whether the proposed annexation is compatible with the character of the surrounding area and complies with the city's urban growth program and policies. The property is surrounded by a mix of single-family lots and multifamily development. The portion of the property currently in the city limits is zoned medium-density as are nine house lots to the south and west of the subject property. These medium-density lots range in size from seven-thousand-three-hundred square feet to sixteen-thousand square feet. To the east of the property, our single-family lots zoned low-density residential, ranging in size from ninety-five-seventy-nine square feet to fourteen-thousand-one-hundred-ninety-three square feet. The proposal is to annex the property not within the city limits for a proposed subdivision with lots ranging in size from seven-thousand-forty-seven to nine-thousand-one-hundred-and-sixteen square feet in area. And I do note that the medium-density zoning does allow duplexes on each lot, which the applicant has indicated they intend to build. Finally, you must find that the proposal complies with the urban growth program and policies to the extent that the city actually has one. It's contained in chapter eight of the comprehensive plan, which I referenced, says that we need an additional three-hundred-and-twenty acres of land, of which we've annexed forty. And the city's adopted master plans. And finally, I note that the comprehensive plan does contain a policy statement that we should have a zoning code with a number of different residential zones and an action item under that policy that says that zoning boundaries should reflect property lines and property should not be split by a zone boundary. So, with that, um, the staff recommendation is approval of the application for annexation and that medium-density residential zone, uh, be, assigned to the newly-annexed territory. Uh, you've got a... The Planning Commission has made that recommendation. You've got their order of approval in your packet and you've got ordinance ten-twenty-five, uh, for your consideration, which if adopted as written, would annex the territory and assign medium-density zoning. And exhibit C of that ordinance is the draft findings of fact that staff recommends that you make and conclusions that the criteria for annexation have been met. With that, when the time comes on the agenda, I'll answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Dan. Uh, so, questions from the council? Anything?
Dan, just to note it.
Go ahead.
It fills in Virginia Street as part of the...
The applicant's subdivision application included completion of East Virginia Street, connecting the two discontiguous sections.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? What... Dan, what, uh... What happens when, um... Government bodies, um, just... Just go rogue in a sense and decide that, uh, they wanna do something else but in spite of all these recommendations and all these nicely-written policies and guidelines? What happens then?
Governing bodies, as the name implies, are the governing body. You are the ultimate decision-makers and the... And policymakers.
Let me...
When... When you go, shall we say, totally rogue, to coin a term.
Which we don't do very often.
You risk your decisions being challenged.
I understand that. Okay.
And being either sent back by L U B A or if you really go totally rogue, being reversed by L U B A.
I understand. Okay. Michelle?
Dan, just for my own benefit and for a little bit of history, how did a piece of property like that piece of property get a little tiny section in it that is not annexed? I mean, that makes no sense. How did that happen? How does that happen, I guess?
It... It happens when, um, the city... When the city is approached by a developer or property owner who says, "Annex my property and here's the legal description" and nobody is either wide awake enough to go, "Oh, we're leaving this little quarter acre unannexed" or doesn't have the backbone to tell the developer, "Go buy that piece too." I mean, uh... Not only is the... In my opinion, not only is the fact that we're left with this little island of unannexed land, but that we allowed all the Pioneer Meadows to be built without telling that developer, "Go build that section of East Virginia Street so we don't have this gap in the road." It just doesn't make sense. Now, it might be explained that the developers were sitting on that side of the table at the time, but, uh, I don't know.
Which is what happened. Yeah. This is... This is twenty-plus years ago and... And the developers were both on the council at the time. Uh-huh. Somebody writes a history of this town, there'll be some... There's gonna be some juicy tidbits in it.
Right.
Yes? Please. Well, yeah, go ahead. A comment there?
I just have a question.
All right. We're always out of order on these things, but go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, it would really be helpful to follow the...
Okay.
The order of the agenda and get testimony in the right order.
Can you wait a minute, ma'am?
Sure.
Okay. Let me ask, while we're in this, questions from the council. Mr. Fisher? What do you suppose... What do you suppose the impact of your plans on that piece of property or A K S's plans if that piece of property were zoned L D?
I thought we weren't considering that.
Yeah, we can't? Can't we consider the zoning?
One of the decisions you need to make is which zone to apply to the newly-annexed property.
This is just a... Just a question. Let me guess, a negative impact?
Sir? Can I get you the microphone for me, please? Thank you.
I mean, this is out of left field. I realize it.
Mr. Mayor, we haven't contemplated that scenario because it would be incon... We feel it would be inconsistent with city policy as Dan has presented it, as we have presented.
And that's probably a fair...
So, we would have...
True assumption.
If we wanted to do that, our case would be extremely weak.
All right. Thank you. One of the things we probably should do in the near future is take a look at... These zoning maps were made in nineteen-seventy-nine. The world changes a little bit. Our community has changed a little bit. And we've seen with this one... This is the second incident of... Of small pieces of... Of medium and high-density property being surrounded by low-density neighborhoods. And there's a... You know, there's a... There's, I guess, certainly more than an irritation factor, but there's... Yeah, there are people upset and we should... We should just look at those zoning maps again. Okay. Anything else from the council? No?
Mr. Mayor, just...
Yes.
One point, Dan. The parcel isn't entirely surrounded by low-density, is it? It looks like on this map here, there's high-density adjacent to it, right? Or medium-density?
The subject parcel is bordered on the north by high-density residential. This... And the... There are nine properties to the west and south of this parcel that are zoned medium-density.
All right. Good enough. Proponents' testimony for those in favor of this? Okay. How about opponents? Either Jordan or James Weaver. James, you wanna start? Or would you like to make your presentation now?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Jim Weaver. I live at ten-oh-two East Virginia Street in Stateon. I come to you tonight with a couple of concerns regarding this annexation and a couple of omissions, if you will, on the packet that you were given today. The first omission was in the recommendation by the Planning Commission to accept this annexation and subsequently the subdivision. When we were at the Planning Commission meeting, they... They strongly wanted you to know that they recommended that you do everything humanly possible to save my oak tree that I'm gonna talk about. That was omitted from the order that I read today. The second part of this that I disagree with is there is now a, what the term is called, proposed right-of-way that goes directly through my tree that was not there before. I'd like to inform the council that this piece of property where that tree sits, half of it is mine. And there are no easements anywhere near that tree. So, I'd like you to keep that in consideration. If you look at the pictures I submitted, I'll go through them one by one for you. The first picture is of the tree. This tree is two-hundred years old and it stands straight up and looks good. I'd like to thank Co-Construction and A K S Engineering for coming up with a plan that would save this tree, provided that they put in the... I don't know what it's called, but a roundabout around the tree. Okay? The precedent for that is on this picture, which is on the corner of Tenth and Burnett, where there's a whole chunk of street that is, uh... This picture right here. That is narrower than the rest of this tree. The other two pictures that you have are looking east and west from Seventh Street to Ninth Street on Virginia. This is what I call gut-hole alley. Every time you go through there, if there's more than one car that goes through there, one of us is gonna go in the ditches. So, to have a thirty-eight-foot-wide stretch of street that ends... Starts there at Ninth and goes to Tenth is not what the surrounding area looks like. I... I'm here simply tonight to ask you. I've tried a number of ways. I went to the Public Works Department. I went to Dan Fleischman. I went emailed the city administrator to help work with us to save this tree. And I've gotten, "Not my job. Can't do it here. It's not part of what you're looking at." And I asked, at the Planning Commission meeting, what I needed to do and they said, "Contact the city administrator," which I did by email. And he is, as of yet, responded to me and that's okay, I'll do it here. What I'd like is your commitment as a city to save this tree. I have the precedent. I own half the property. And, you know, if they wanna right-of-way through there, they gotta talk to me partially anyway because it's my property. So, I'd ask you on behalf of this single citizen and the members who are sitting here of this area, to let's... Let's do the right thing and save the tree. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim.
I have a question.
Go ahead. Go ahead, please.
Can I ask you a question?
Certainly.
So during part of your presentation, you thanked the AKS for coming up with a way to save the tree. So I guess I'm unclear as to, if they've come up with a way to save the tree, what,
In their preliminary,
what does the annexation have to do with the tree, I guess?
Well, and it's, this is all jumbled together because you got two separate things going here. But the part that I'm interested in right now is your right-of-way going right straight through my tree. And that's part of the annexation. It's in the package. What's happened is I've gone to everybody, and I said, "Hey, let's work this out." And I have gotten zero help except for AKS and Co-Construction, who have developed the plan.
Which seems like that would be the most important people that you would want to have.
Except for that Mr. Fleishman has advised me that it's up to the Public Works Director, who has, someone from his office has said, "We'll just chop the roots." And the city engineer to determine whether or not this tree is saved.
Thank you.
Dan, quick question, Dan. As I understand from, one of his questions, one of his concerns was the fact that the street is, part of the development process will be finishing that street, which was one of your concerns, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so that is part of the process, is to finish your street for you. So you won't have that ugly mess.
Well, no. My concern, Mr. Counselor, is that where they want to put the street, with the 38-feet-wide street plus the 10-foot boundaries on the other side, are going to go right through that tree.
James, you're asking that that right-of-way be, that be a narrower street?
Yes.
In that area. And the real concern is to excavate for the paving and whatnot, that there's going to be root damage.
Except for, and I'm not the expert here. I grant you that. Except for the fact that AKS Engineering has told me that they have an arborist on staff who will come in at the construction phase of this and give them some guidance.
So I don't, I don't have a problem at all telling you that if and when this should ever come before the council, and I have anything to do with it, I would certainly take all of your concerns into consideration. So I hear you, and I, and I read your information. And I, and I also totally understand the importance of a tree that's 200 years old, so.
And, you know, all I'm, all I'm asking for is a little help here. That's it.
You know, if you could find all the kilts in the, in the area, you know, they used to worship those things.
Well, I'm partly Native American, and I worship trees.
Well, that's, yeah, well, the, those kilts of Northwestern Europe, they thought oak trees were pretty, pretty special. I've got one, it's only about 100 years old in the yard. We just had it declared a heritage tree, and, and, I don't, that doesn't,
I haven't been able to do that for a while now, and I can't seem to get a good answer on how to do that either.
Well, it's possible to do. But it's, you know, we need that street finished. And I think there'll be a conscious effort on a lot of folks' part to try to save it if we can. I hope so. Okay. Anyone else? Well, wait a minute. Jordan, you wanted to say, Ms. Nor.
Hi, my name is Jordan Nor. I live at 885 East Virginia Street. So in terms of that property, it is on the west side. That's the, and that's the part of the street, Counselor Cronquist, that you were talking about, or that, I'm sorry, Mr. Weaver was talking about, that he lives on the east side of that street, which is nice and developed. It's where I run because there's streetlights and sidewalks, and it's completely, like, oh, thank you. It's completely paved and nice. And I live on the street on this side that he's talking about that's not going to be fixed. And so that is part of the concern, is that once this property gets annexed into the city, that it's going to be a through street. And in, according to the guidelines, a through street is the 38, correct me if I'm wrong. It's the wider streets. But it's going to kind of funnel into this part of Virginia Street that isn't fixed. So the project that was just finished, that looks beautiful, by the way, from Evergreen to about 4th Street on Virginia Street, looks amazing, but it stops right there, and then it starts again at a part of the road that isn't as nice. And so it goes from that 4th Street to 9th Street where this property ends. And so that's a big concern for people. Right, as of right now, since it's not a through street, people turn, they go on Virginia Street, they turn onto 10th Street, and then it kind of elbows around to Burnett Street. And so people are using that to get to their houses on Virginia Street. Another one of the concerns is that once this becomes a through street, that people that live on the east side of Virginia Street will start using this more because it's a faster access. I feel like they probably go around to avoid this section of the road. So that's a concern. I'm not necessarily against the annexation. We're not talking about the subdivision right now, and so that is kind of a source of contention for me. But the annexation of that piece of property itself is not an issue. However, if you're talking about, if it has to go with, with the land, yes, to the right, excuse me, to the west of the property, it is medium-density. And then the next property over, which is owned by the Tabers, it is also medium-density. But then the next property over is my house. It's low-density. And I got from the city, from the county, that all the houses from 6th Street to up until my property are all low-density on Virginia Street. Once you hop over, you're going to hit that part that's annexed or that you want to annex is also low-density. And then it continues on. I'm aware that there's houses on Burnett Street that are medium-density. But if you go and look at that area, the medium-density doesn't fit the characteristics in terms of all the houses are single-family homes. So we already know that the intention of the property, if it's medium-density, is to put duplexes on it, which doesn't fit the characteristics of the property. So I would just request and urge you to just drive that area of town because it's not going to fit. Even though the properties, yes, the properties to the north of it, they are high-density, and those are apartments. But I feel like if you move onto a property and you know your neighbors are apartments, that's one thing. But if you move onto a property and next to you is a low-density piece, you're thinking that it's going to be single-family, and then it turns into duplexes. Well, that's going to significantly reflect on those property owners. Our side of the street, the houses are smaller. The neighborhood is, people are kind of jazzing it up a little bit, especially in my house. We're going to get it painted. But on the other side of this, the street, these are big, brand, not brand-new, they were built in the 90s, but they're big houses. They, it's just, it's not going to fit with the characteristics of the rest, the flow of the street. I also want to say that the tree is important to the neighborhood. There's lots of kids that play around it. My kids, Mr. Weaver's neighbors. It's a, it's an important part of the neighborhood. And I just had, so the two other concerns that I had were that by annexing the property and attaching the street, again, we're going to have more traffic on it. So that's a big deal. And then also, there isn't a stop sign from, I believe, 6th Street to where it dead-ends. And if you don't put a stop sign in there on 9th Street, which is what I'm advocating for, there won't be a stop sign from 6th Street to 15th Street on Virginia Street. And the only reason people slow down in front of my house right now is because they have to turn a 90-degree angle or else they're going to go into the, go into this lot. So those are my concerns. Okay, I think that was it.
Is that it?
Do you have any questions?
Yeah, there's some questions.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jordan. Anything else on opponent's testimony? Anyone? Okay, let's go on to government agencies.
Didn't that older woman want to talk?
What's that?
Didn't that older, the woman want to talk that came up to the podium?
There's a time, the next thing on the agenda is questions from the public.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay, she asked a question. Did she get an answer, Dan?
I don't know, she hasn't asked her question yet.
Okay. Ma'am, did you want to ask a question? It's, Come on. I'm sorry, we, we kind of left you out. Go ahead and get up there and ask about it, please. These things happen.
Jackie Sparks, 1145 East Virginia. We were always told that the strip you're annexing was actually left that way because 10th was going to go through, up to the middle.
Okay.
But that's what we were told, that that was, that strip was for that. So if you're wondering why it's by itself, that's it, I guess.
Okay. And, Dan, does 10th come south from, from where it makes those two 90-degree turns?
There, there is a, one, one block section of 10th, North 10th Avenue that is developed between East Virginia Street and East Burnett Street.
Okay.
The right-of-way for North 10th Avenue also extends about 100 feet south of East Burnett for future extension. The city's transportation system plan adopted in 2004 shows North 10th Avenue going north from East Virginia Street, connecting to its current southern terminus at East Jefferson.
But there's a building in the way, isn't there?
But there are buildings in the way, and therefore, staff has not suggested to this applicant that they dedicate land for future expansion of North 10th Avenue because the like, for two reasons. One, the likelihood of those buildings that are in the way of going away is fairly small. And two, with the dedication of right-of-way for East Virginia that we are requiring, if there was additional right-of-way for North 10th Avenue, there would be hardly any of this lot left for development, and the city probably would be open to a claim for taking property without compensation, unless we were offering compensation.
Thank you. Dan, are there any government agencies that we needed to consult on this one?
Marion County Public Works was notified. Marion County Planning was notified. Marion County Planning, while not submitting formal remarks, sent an email going, "Great." Marion County Public Works did not reply because it does not impact any Marion County streets.
Okay, all right, good, thanks.
Santiam Water Control District was also notified, and we received no comments.
All right, thank you. Any general testimony on this, on this? How about questions from the public? Are there any more? Yes? Come on up. I think it's Neil, I think.
Yeah, yeah, my name's Neil Chod. I live in 475 West Idaho, here in Stateon. I just, I walk through that area all the time. It's a nice, from my place, it's three miles, all the way back through the park and everything, so I do that quite a bit. And I go by your home where the oak tree is. But I would urge the council to go look at that area. I mean, I have no issues with the annexation. But somehow or another, when they did the other development, they cut it short. They didn't go to the next street. They didn't finish the corner. And I think it was because of the oak tree, they just stopped the street short. So now that you have to deal with, with this annexation. And there's blocks where you walk around the tree, correct?
That's on my copy.
Right. But you have to get a sidewalk in there, too. And it isn't just curved, and it's on a corner. So you, you have to take all that in consideration. So I'd urge the council to go take a look at that. Planning Commission probably has, I think it's probably a better thing for the Planning Commission meeting, but it's something to think about.
There, well, yeah, there probably are some real engineering questions there.
You know, I worked for the City of Portland for Environmental Services for 23 years. And we did, you know, a lot of green streets. So we had a lot of curb bumpouts. So it's, and you've got a pretty wide street in there. People have plenty of room to park on both sides. So it's just something to consider that you could do something like that on that corner.
Okay, all right, thank you, Neil. Anyone else? James?
Thank you once again, Mr. Mayor. My question would be, did the council, there was nothing mentioned about putting any speed signs in there. And we realize since it's a neighborhood that it's 25 miles an hour. But I would like to at least, if you're going to put this through, I'd like to at least ask that the council please put some speed signs.
Okay, all right. Anything else on that one? Questions from the council? Anything? Okay. Applicant summary. Mr. Fisher?
Thank you, councilors, again. Kurt Fisher, AKS Engineering, 4300 Cherry Street Northeast in Kaiser. Most of what you've heard are not dealing with the annexation portion of the application. Mr. Weaver is correct. He reached out to us very early on in the process, and we reflected the preservation of that tree on our preliminary conceptual plans that we submitted as part of the subdivision application that generally, basically just showed that the spacing with the travel lanes and the sidewalk and the curbs, that it is feasible to preserve the tree. But more detailed engineering needs to be done, and those issues need to be examined in the context of fully engineered street plans. And we're just not at that phase of the project yet. The dedication of the right-of-way is also not part of the annexation portion of the application. That portion was, was approved by Planning Commission. The 38-foot-wide street that was referenced is, in fact, to meet the amount of pavement that is already developed to the east of this portion of property. So it is, in a sense, being proposed, or being implemented to be compatible with the street design in the neighboring subdivision. And I think I can conclude my comments there and take any questions that you may have at this time.
Any, any questions for Mr. Fisher? Okay. Kurt, I think we're good. Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Mr. Fleishman, anything on a staff summary?
Yeah, I've got a, a couple of things. I want to respond to some of the testimony. I want to direct your attention to page 16 of the Planning Commission's order, which after making their recommendation on the annexation application and then making a final approval of the subdivision and placing five conditions on that approval, the Planning Commission wrote, "Though not a condition of approval placed on the application, the Planning Commission takes note of the written comments and testimony at the public hearing regarding the existing mature oak tree on the property. The Planning Commission urges the Public Works Director and the city engineer to take all efforts to preserve the tree." So in response to Mr. Weaver's testimony about error in the order not reflecting the Planning Commission's concerns about the tree, it is in the order. Secondly, Secondly, the tree itself is not really a matter of whether the property is annexed or not. The tree is mostly on this property, not anybody else's property, but it appears the property line does go through the trunk of the tree from the survey that was submitted with the subdivision application. You've got before you, the staff recommendation contained with, with Ordinance 1025. You've got, staff has provided you with, I think it's seven different options at this point, including closing the public hearing, approving the first consideration of the ordinance as presented, approving the application and modifying the ordinance, denying the application, which would require redrafting the order and making findings appropriately, continuing tonight's public hearing until September 17th, closing the hearing open and leaving the, closing the hearing but leaving the record open for additional written testimony, or closing the hearing and record but continuing your deliberation until your next meeting. Staff's recommendation is that you close the hearing and close the record and consider Ordinance 125, and our recommendation is that it be adopted as presented.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Before I close the hearing, or that's the, that would be the next, or, before I do that, I'm going to ask if anyone on the council wants to hold, carry this over to another meeting. Mr. Conquist?
Mr. Mayor? Dan, on part, part one, is there like a 1A? I, I know that Councilor Gladwell asked about the different density, and the 1 is approve it coming in at medium density. Could we approve it coming into low density?
That would be approving the application and modifying the ordinance.
Okay.
If that's, if that's what you want to do.
No, just asking if that was possible.
Yes.
Okay. I didn't, actually, just for clarification, I didn't ask anything about the density.
Well, is that, can that even be on the table, Dan?
I, I believe it's on the table. You, you've got, you've got two independent decisions to make. One is, are the criteria for approval of the annexation met?
Okay.
And if so, what zone to apply to the newly annexed territory? The applicant has requested that you apply medium-density zoning, the Planning Commission has recommended, and staff recommends, that you apply medium-density zoning.
Because that's what the zoning map says.
Because, because the bulk of the property is currently zoned medium-density, and we have a policy in place that says the zoning boundary should follow property lines, and we don't want to split properties partly in one zone and partly in another.
Okay.
Can we close the hearing?
Well, does anyone, does anyone on the council want to move to modify one of those orders?
Well, first you need to decide to close the hearing and decide whether you want to close the record or not.
All right.
I suggest we close the hearing, close the record, and make a motion.
I'm going to close the hearing then, and so the, I assume that with a closed hearing, the record is closed, and we can move to council deliberation. What do you folks want to do? Lots of possibilities here.
I, I suggest, I make a motion to approve the applicant and the first consideration of Ordinance 1025 as it was presented and recommended by the Planning Commission.
Second? Okay. I've got a motion and a second, to approve the application and the first consideration of Ordinance Number 1025, and that is to move to approve the application of Co-construction LLC land use file number 13-06/18 for annexation and assign medium-density residential zoning to the property by enacting Ordinance Number 1025 as presented. Okay, any discussion? Okay. Alyssa, would you poll the council, please?
Sure. Councilor Conquist?
Aye.
Councilor Mullen?
Yes.
Councilor Gladwell?
Yes.
Councilor Uselman?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero.
Okay, all right, and we're done with that.
You have a closing statement to read.
Yes, yes, I'm getting, I'm getting on to this after all these years, Dan. Hard to believe, I know. The council's action may be appealed within 21 days of a meeting of the notice of decision to the Land Use Court of Appeals under ORS 197.805 to 855. Okay, unfinished business, none. And thank everybody for participating tonight in relatively civilized discourse, and that's always nice. No unfinished business, new business, Resolution Number 982, approving rate increases for water, wastewater and stormwater facilities. And since Mr. Parks isn't here tonight, who's carrying the...
I will be, Mr. Mayor.
Carrying the water on this one?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before you, is Resolution 982, just to discuss this briefly, we've been having conversations and been working as part of our fiscal policies to move fees associated with the city onto a CPI index, basically an inflationary index, with the idea of, of keeping our rates consistent with the, the cost of doing business, if you will. We've been discussing this and passing it in different forms, part of our fiscal policies which we've adopted and now we're bringing forward. We discussed this also in our budget, vegetarian process, talking about this coming forward. So we're bringing it now forward to, to apply the CPI index to our rates, and without it, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Keith, for the record, just so people out there don't think we're putting money to the police budget without asking their permission, in the, in the proposal, water rates haven't been adjusted since July 2010, stormwater since April 2017, and wastewater since July 20... It's been a long time, and a lot of, you know, 6% or 10% inflation since we've adjusted these rates.
The, the idea behind all of this, and this is becoming, I think, more standard among cities, is to, you set your rates, to keep your rates at an adjusted inflationary rate so that over time, you don't see the value of, of the, the money that you're bringing in not keeping up with the cost of, of operations. So those inflationary rates over time increase, and what you've seen is several cities locally who haven't, haven't been adjusting and then have to have the unpleasantness of doing large rate increases. In fact, I think both of our neighboring communities recently have done pretty significant double-digit increases over time. So the idea behind this is you set your rates, and then you, you set them for adjust, to adjust to the inflationary rate so that over time, your rates are bringing in and keeping consistent with the costs that it, we, we incur to, to produce the services.
Keith, is it, is there any, I guess I'll call this forward thinking on, we may have to build more water facilities as this DAM project at Detroit gets some traction and starts to get funding.
Well, that would be a, a whole other, other subject matter, really. I mean, what we're looking at here is, is really just trying to make sure that the rates we're charging are keeping up with the costs that we incur in to do business. I would say this is trying to be forward thinking, we've been applying these throughout other areas of, of city services, and hopefully what this does is, is make sure that over time, you were able to keep up with our costs of providing services.
Okay. Okay. What do you folks want to do with that?
We move, we...
Council deliberation, there any, go ahead.
I move, we approve it as presented.
Okay.
It's been a long time, and inflation's been more than 2.8%. I think people, even on fixed incomes, realize that their social security goes up and such.
Okay, I've got a motion to approve Resolution Number 982, approving utility rate increases by the change in the Consumer Price Index of 2.8%. Is there a second? There is a second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. That one's passed, okay. And thank you, Dan, or thank you, Keith, for doing that. Neighborhood Improvement Grants, staff report, Mr. Fleischman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, it's a pleasure to be back. The issue before you is, is, the staff is looking for some feedback from the council on the development of a, a new program for the city. The, the budget for this fiscal year included $5,000 in a, in a new line item for Neighborhood Improvement Grants. Staff has developed a concept of how the grant program would be structured and, and the grants awarded, but is looking for some, some feedback in whether you think we're heading in the right direction on the conceptual framework, the objectives of the program, and the assessment criteria for the applications. Basically, the proposal that we've put together is that an application must be received from a group of at least three individuals slash households slash families slash property owners, but, you know, so it has to be, we don't have established neighborhood associations as larger cities do, so this was an effort to, to say this isn't just one person coming forward, but it's something that, that some semblance of a neighborhood is behind. So anyway, so that a group of at least three come together to promote a project in their neighborhood. One person is designated as the lead applicant for dealing with staff. If the application is chosen for funding, projects may fall into either of two categories, either a neighborhood improvement project or a neighborhood livability initiative, we're calling them. Improvement projects are ones that would improve a, a public or a shared space within the neighborhood, or strengthen neighborhood identity in some way. Examples include landscape improvements or maintenance, signage, benches. Improvement projects could be on either public properties, such as planting street trees in the right-of-way, or improvements to a park, or on private properties, such as coordinated improvements to front yards. Livability initiatives would be those that aim to strengthen social connections among neighbors, increase safety, address some type of neighborhood challenge, serve senior citizens or low-income community members in some way. Examples include perhaps organizing a neighborhood emergency response network so that people can reach out to contact their neighbors in an organized manner should there be some type of man-made or, or natural disaster, providing outreach to social services on, on behalf of those in need, or, or creating some type of neighborhood cooperative daycare. I've provided in the packet a draft in, in sort of manuscript form of a, a brochure to be produced, as well as a draft of the assessment criteria sort of score sheet. What we envision is that applications would be available in the next three to four weeks, be returned no later than November 30th. Staff would review the applications and provide an assessment and recommendation to the city council for final award of the grants, and as I said at the beginning, we're looking for your feedback, concerns, comments, hopefully constructive criticism, but we'll take any on, on what we've put together.
Okay, counselor?
Dan, a couple of things that I would like to suggest. Number one, that that number of three individuals be changed to five, so that you have a better representation of a community, and that there be something in your application and your scoring for sustainability of the project after it occurs. So if someone's going to put something in a park, how is it going to be taken care of after it? If they're going to start a program where people are getting together, how's it going to be maintained once the money's gone? So, again, the, I, I won't go into why I want to change the number to three unless you want me, to five unless you would, if you, if you'd like to ask me that question, I'll tell you, but that's...
There was no magic in three.
Yeah, 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 so I, that, that's the two things. I'd like to see five, that shows a little more buy-in from the local community, and I'd like to see something that shows the sustainability of whatever's done and how it's going to be sustained, if it is, or if it's not a project that needs sustainability, then not.
So, we're asking for a little modification there?
Yeah.
I think just suggestions is what he was asking for.
Yep.
That's a great idea, thank you.
Yeah, okay. I like the rest of it, rest of it looked good.
Thank you.
Mr. Porter, I have a question.
Go ahead, Chris.
So it's $5,000 per fiscal year, yes?
It's five dollar, $5,000 in this fiscal year, future years will be up to the Budget Committee and Council.
And if we're talking about dividing that amongst five winners, right?
No.
Not necessarily.
Or two or three.
Or one.
I mean, it will, it will depend on how many applications are received and how many...
But there's only $5,000 available to hold. So if five people win, that's $5,000 divided into five people.
Are you talking about my five, that I'm talking about?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm, that's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about that if a neighborhood wants to do a project, they have to have five people supporting that project.
Oh, okay, yeah. I'm, I was, so here's my question then. So how many people can win the grant, based on the number, so 10 people apply for the grant, 10 different neighborhoods? How many can win that? Is it, is it the goal to have one person win that grant?
No, that, that is not a, a goal that I have in mind. I think the, the answer to how many can win is, is, it depends. It depends on if, if, if... Let me, let me, go ahead.
Let me explain why I'm asking. $5,000 for a project, and then there's some matching involved, that's, that's a pretty good project, you can do something with that. But the more we spread that money out, the smaller the things that you're actually going to be able to accomplish.
And that will be our decision when we get the application. We can, we can approve one project, or we can approve 20.
So we can plant a tree, you know, for the $1,000, yay!
But that's our, our decision, once that happens.
And, and the text, the, the draft brochure...
It's a 200-year-old.
The draft brochure suggests that, again, because this is a new program, it's kind of unknown, but that it's expected to typically be, individual grant amounts are expected to typically be in the range of 1,500 to 3,000 each. So, that, so, yeah, so two or, it'll be two or three a year, no more than two or three a year most likely, if we get that many applications.
I was just going to say, typically, in the past, when we've given money away, the problem has been getting anyone to apply for it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dan, that's a great project.
Yeah, that has, that has real possibilities, and we'll see where we go with that.
All right, thank you.
Um, no action called for on that, so staff and commission reports, Cindy and Elizabeth Baldwin's, Cindy Sherron and Elizabeth Baldwin, the Finance Department, everyone had a chance to look at that, I hope. And Chief Seabans, you're here tonight. Tell us...
Tell us why all the good news.
What the police are doing.
Mayor and council, you have before this, before you the statistical report for the month of July. Those numbers are in order from previous months, and what we would expect. I would like to say that we had a very good national light out two, two weeks ago. We did have lower numbers than in previous years, but even with those lower numbers, we still had a, a really good event with lots of good conversations with the people that, that were able to come. We estimate between 200 and 300 people that, that showed up between all four parks.
Warm evening.
Pardon me?
Warm evening.
It was 96 degrees.
It was a very, very warm evening.
Yeah.
So chief, on police activity, these are good things, I'm not asking why, but from July to July, we've dropped from 986 to 753 in investigated incidents, from 441 to 177. I mean, is that community policing?
No, that, that's a number that I explained... That, that's a number that I explained several months ago. We changed the way that we, we calculated our, our numbers before, is why there's the difference in that.
It just continues to look good.
Yeah.
I have a question.
Go ahead, please.
So I, I think I might know the answer to this, but I'd like clarification from you. And maybe it's in the top of my mind, because I had a guy in my property the other night, which I figured out afterwards, he was stealing my cans and bottles, but it took me a bit to figure out what he was doing, as he's jumping the fence. I have a tall fence in the back of my house. It's been pretty good shape. Anyway, then when that happened, of course, I kind of started paying more attention to all of the people that are talking on certain social medias about all of the thefts that are happening supposedly in everybody's yards. And so I'm wondering, I don't necessarily see that, that there've actually been any dramatic rise of, of that kind of thing in our, in our area, but people are talking about things like the Lancaster drugies are moving further east, and anyway, is it just social media gone wild, or is there really some kind of uptick in, in theft of property?
Yeah. That's, a lot of it is the, the social media uptick, and, but we really don't have a, a large increase. It fluctuates up and down. Right now, we have a, an increase in stolen vehicles. We know the group that is doing that, and it's, we're working to, to catch them, put a stop to that. And those, those, those types of numbers fluctuate up and down. If you do, if you look around from community to community, and I've been doing this because that's part of my job, is to look to see what is going on in other communities, and our numbers are pretty consistent with other, other places. And if you drive through other small communities around the area, whether it be communities to the north or even far over to the east, I was doing some vacationing on the east side of the mountains this year, and drove through several small towns, and there are quite a few, quite a bit more of that type of, or transient type population wandering around in the past. I don't know what the reasoning is. We really don't have a huge population of transient, a crowd. There's a small handful of, of those that, that they, they would have a place to live, and they go from couch to couch, and in the summertime, they will pitch a tent here and there because of the warmer weathers. But then we have maybe like one or two that are really true transient people in the community. But we put, we keep an eye out on that.
No, I'm not so sure it's the transient population that's stealing my, my bottles and cans. I mean, it could be my neighbor.
Yikes.
So the other thing I would like to mention is, the next couple of weeks, school's going to be starting out, and I would like to ask the public to really keep a close eye out on the, the young people as they're going to and from the schools, as they're walking around, and keep an eye on the crosswalks, and just slow down and pay attention.
Chief, would it do any good to ask school administrators to put something in the, the early flyers that go out to parents about trying to slow down?
Yes. Yep. We, we work with the schools on putting that out, right at the beginning of the year. We put something out in the newsletter. We put things out on social media when it comes to it as well.
Joe, Joe and I both live on a narrow street that's kind of up, one of the gateway? What's the word for it? People running from Third down to the school at St. Mary's. Narrow street, not in very good shape, certain man-made obstacles in the way, and through proper channels, of course, Joe and I, in a neighborhood, and we can include Priscilla, she's only two blocks away, put a certain amount of pressure on, on law enforcement to help with this, but always through the proper channels. Thank you. Ah, heck. Actually, you don't say much, Joe.
I go right to the, I go to the source for that one.
You go to the source, okay. We're good. Thank you. Let's see, what's next? Lance, Public Works Director, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Before you, you have the monthly operating report for July. I have nothing further to add to that data, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have regarding public works, that is.
Okay. Looks like a busy month.
It's always busy, public works.
That's right. It is. Those guys are always moving around and, yeah. Okay. Next, planning to develop. Mr. Fleishman, we haven't heard much from you tonight, so what can you share with us?
I'll just say you've got my written report, and I'll answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Anything, folks? Library Director, Jenna?
So Mayor and council, you have my report in front of you. I would like to make sure that we acknowledge and thank all our sponsors for summer reading. We have amazing sponsors who support our summer reading program, and they, we really appreciate their support.
Okay. Very good. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Jenna. Are there any presentations or comments from the public at this late hour? Please.
Sorry, and thank you again for a little bit more time. After my initial request or comments earlier, is there a way for the golf course to find out whether or not the water from the new development up there on Shaft is being put into Mill River, uh, Mill Creek? And how do we find out that information?
Well, that information goes through my office, and we review that to make sure they're doing everything appropriate. We have a city engineer and myself, who's a registered engineer, that review those plans. What I can tell you is the stormwater from that development is actually being, it's going into our regional detention facility that we're constructing now, and that regional detention facility that we're constructing is holding back all runoff from that entire basin to what was just running off that grass area in existing conditions. So we're holding back everything.
Okay.
And that's why it's, you know, a five to 19-acre detention pond, because it's holding everything back.
So, because I'm, I'm a layman when it comes to those things. So that means essentially we will not feel any additional impact?
You should not feel any additional impacts. That's correct.
Okay.
And we have, we have redundancies built in to where we can control that runoff, whatever's going north of Mill Creek, to whatever's going to the Salem ditch to the west, and we can control that, and we can decide which, what goes where, but the way it's designed currently, you're not going to see any more runoff going into Mill Creek from that site.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.